Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 4th meeting with the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you this morning, we thank you for all things and we thank you for our county and we thank you for our Commissioners and their staff and we continue to pray that you give them the wisdom and knowledge that they need to make the right decisions for Lorraine County and give them the patience to understand all the things that go on in the county and bringing the unity, Father, and we just continue to pray for that because we know a house divided against itself cannot stand, so we continue to pray for unity in all our divisions of Lorraine County and we thank you for the staff and we look forward to the future, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Beth. Today, we have, every week, we have a dog from our dog kennel that we feature, so our dog warden, Tim, is going to show you what we have for today. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Operations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as akin on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a few issues. I believe it'll be short for executive session, but essential hires at the Record Center, Job and Family Services. I do have an update that I failed to give you last week on the contract at 911. Also, I would wish to discuss potential sale and purchase of real estate and ongoing impending litigation. All those topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into the next session, we talk about those issues that I've detailed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve, waive the reading in a minute, so January 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, purchase two Kangen document scanners and related services from Casnet Akron in the amount not to exceed $22,372, which includes training, consumables, and maintenance for a period of three years. Authorize Director to execute on behalf of Board to amend for changes and increase value with prosecutors for rose to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Under the Coroner, approve an enter and agreement with Robert G. Cool III and William Jordan Carrero at a rate of $100 per case to perform services of pathologist assistance on an on-call, as-needed basis for autopsies at University Hospital, Alariah Medical Center, Alariah, and AFFS Company Lorraine, effective April 1st, 2015 through March 31st, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, certify the annual county highway system mileage in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 450104, for 2014. Mileage for 2013 was 269.698 miles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Approve an enter and contract for sale and purchase of real estate of real property with Jennifer L. Bentley in the amount of $2,150 for parcel 008 WDVNT as part of the Safe Routes to School Project Sheffield Township and funding is provided by ODOT.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Approve an enter and contract for sale and purchase of real property with Clearview Local School District Board of Education in the amount of $1,025 for parcel 001 WDVNT as part of the Safe Routes to School Project Sheffield Township and funding is provided by ODOT.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Approve an enter and contract for sale and purchase of real estate with Patricia F. Echo in the amount of $2,425 for parcel 005 WDVNT as part of the Safe Routes to School Project Sheffield Township and funding is provided by ODOT.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Actually, I have one issue I need to bring from the floor. If I can just find out what I did with it. Commissioner, would you pass that down to the clerk, please? Commissioner, that's a, that has to do with software and how we collect data over at the WDA. Rather than WDA, Children's Services, and Job and Family Services having individual contracts, we thought it'd be best to join it together with one lead contract and then each vendor be able, each user be able to get a decreased license cost. Going to save a few hundreds, not, it's not a lot of money, but, but, you know, those little collaboratives that add up to a lot at the end, so I'd ask Madam Clerk to read that resolution.
Bundling like Time Warner?
Well, we're bundling to save money, we're not bundling to charge the consumer more.
Approve an enter and agreement for the provision of professional services for Civic Solutions Group to provide development and hosting of the data required to process vouchers to the county auditor and upload monthly financials to the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services in the amount of $1,834 for one-time development fee, $3,900 for ongoing hosting costs for calendar year '15, and then $200 annual fee for the hosting cost effective January 1st, '15 through December 31st, '15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Also like to welcome Team Lorraine County, I see they're here.
Leadership Lorraine County, Jim.
Your leadership, sorry.
Team Lorraine County was Monday.
It was Monday, sorry. Leadership Lorraine County. The, just a slip of the tongue. The, I had the opportunity several years ago to be one of the hosts for their event, so it's always nice to see the future leaders coming out and attending meetings. Hope you come back over and over again because, you know, it's always nice when people attend a meeting and I think when you see your government at work, you'll, you'll understand things a lot better than sometimes the misleading information you get from people that have different agendas, so come see for yourself and act for yourself and make decisions for yourself and you'll see that there's a lot of people working hard for you. That's all I have to say this morning, thank you.
Well said.
Mr. Rannus?
Commissioners, I have three matters. One, pending litigation, two imminent litigations that I need to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
Okay. Commissioners' report.
Just welcome, Leadership Lorraine County. You're welcome to come tonight to our forum about transit. It's going to be at the college, is it from 6 to 8, 6 to 8 o'clock, in the Spitzer Center? Last night, we were at the College Nexus Pipeline that's coming through Lorraine County. Had an open house there yesterday, so they had about 200 people visiting, finding out how the routes are going to affect their property, so they are working with, with the residents, hopefully rerouting some of the, some of the pipeline to offset like going through houses or structures or... We did find out last night that there are setbacks, they don't have any required setbacks other than the 50 feet of easement, so I was kind of concerned about that. Some of this pipeline could be up as close to 25 feet from a structure, which is kind of scary, but they're working through that and I'm sure we'll have more updates as they get farther along, so, into my report.
Yeah, busy week. Just to tie into your Nexus Pipeline and discussions, I was talking to both sides, our residents and the township trustees and also the people from Spectre, that at this point, the Board isn't taking a confrontational approach to them. We're trying to work with them that we can redirect this pipeline, hopefully farther away from any of the concentrated areas. I did have a discussion with Nick Costanderis, who is the President of Summit County Council, which is Akron, and they actually did prepare a resolution and pass against the pipeline, but they're also working with the entities to reroute it down Route 30. So we'll see where that ends up contiguous to Lorraine County eventually, once they're done with their plan. Also, Team Lorraine County had their annual Groundhog Economic Development meeting Monday morning at the college. Not as big a turnout as we had reservations for. Mother Nature sort of got in the way, we had about 130 or 140 out of 240 expected. It was a great presentation, gentleman named John Grubbs from Texas, an economist and motivational speaker, discussed the changes in our economy, the baby boomers going out and retiring out and not many in between, that now the millennials, which are up to the age of 32, 33 years old, and how they want to work nowadays. He actually had a title of his new book, Leading the Lazy, which was kind of funny. They're not lazy, but they want to do output, not sit put. What can I get performed in the amount of time you expect from me, don't make me sit in an office, eight hours a day, 40 hours a week, which is just a new dynamic we're all going to have to prepare ourselves for entering job market. There's a lot of the millennials here, so they can always address that also if they'd like. We also had the Nexus Pipeline. Oh, what else did we have meetings on this week? I think that about wraps it up, I guess, so. Commissioner Lundey?
Yeah, it's been a very interesting week. The Nexus meeting, I thought, was very well done at the community college. All three of us were there to hear the public's concerns and also ask a lot of direct questions. I know Commissioner Kowski and myself had, were questioning some of the leaders with FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They probably felt like they were being interviewed by Barbara Walters because we just kept firing questions at them, but thought we got a lot of good answers to those questions addressing the concerns of residents. Also, wanted to take this time to congratulate Tony Gallo for the amazing job that he is doing. Had the Chamber Luncheon this past week and I know the business community is very happy with what Tony's doing and, and we're just really fortunate to have his energy and talent working for us. You know, the Governor's new budget has been unveiled. Obviously, it's a concern for those of us in local government. It's important for everybody in this room to know that in the past four years, Lorraine County has seen a reduction of $48 million in school funding and in local government funding from Columbus, and obviously, that makes it a lot more difficult for folks at the local level to do their job. A little concerned about not hearing anything about an increase in local government funding. That will continue to be a problem for us. Concerned about the Governor wanting to raise the sales tax. That obviously takes away, or makes it more difficult opportunities for us if we want to go forward with initiatives to try to raise additional funding. Was a little concerned about the tone of the announcement. There was a comment made about trying to coordinate, I believe, the TANF dollars and how those are administered. The Governor's quote was, "Set matrix to measure this coordination effort, and if counties don't meet them, we will take every dime out of the county and privatize it or take it to the state level." I guess I would just urge that, that the Governor look at ways to partner with us instead of trying to threaten us. I think the residents of this county and throughout the state want us working together. We are certainly willing to work with the Governor, certainly hope that the tone on that will change. Also, the Governor had stated that the best way out of poverty is getting a job and then a better job, so we hope that the Governor will also take that into account when he's considering the transportation budget and more dollars for public transit. By the way, the Transit Meeting is taking place at the Community College tonight. That will be at the Spitzer Center from 6 until 8 p.m. and we hope you'll be able to attend.
Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the Board, just come up to the microphone and all you have to do is state your name and address for the record and talk about anything you want. Don't be afraid.
All these dynamic leaders, all these dynamic future leaders?
Nope.
I do Frank's comments.
Broke the ice, good for you.
I just couldn't let you challenge us like that.
That's right. Well, guys, your leader has stepped up.
So Frank Whitfield, 1872 Turner Boulevard, Alariah, Ohio. My question is about, to Commissioner Calo and to the rest of the Commissioners, as we saw that presentation about this, this growing workforce in the millennials, what is role do you see the Commissioners playing in making Lorraine County an attractive place for these Oberlin College grads, for our recent college grads out of LCC and then folks to want to move here? What would you, what is on your horizon?
Well, actually, and I missed, we got cut short. We did a Leadership Lorraine County Q and A this morning prior to the Commissioners' meeting for the public so they know where I'm leading to. I had forgotten a couple of comments. Commissioner Lundey had brought up the Chamber of Commerce involvement with Tony Gallo. Team Lorraine County, of course, that we didn't discuss this morning. Working with the private sector and those entities and working with government and how best to keep those people here and doing the attraction piece, when we were talking about revitalizing downtowns earlier, again, a couple of those items that get brought up due to time constraints, but I think our private sector is going to be the driver on that, government's going to be the support system. Government has yet to create a job other than the ones we hire here, but we are an integral part of helping companies locate here, whether it be through financing, land acquisition, small business development corporation, helping companies come up with their plans. So I think that's going to be government's role moving forward, your group also, I mean, there's going to be a lot, it's a lot of partnerships that are going to move Lorraine County forward as we move forward and as we talked about the millennials, how people want to work nowadays are new, the leaders of a decade or two from now, on how they want to work and what their expectations are is going to change a lot of the dynamics on how we're going to operate as government in regards to helping the business component. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Good.
I will tell you how long I have known Brenda Troxell. I was, I was the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for Lorraine, well, back then, I think it was Lorraine City Chamber of Commerce, prior to us coming together as a county chamber.
No, we were the county then.
Were we the county back then in the mid-'80s?
Yes.
Okay, we were already the county. And she was my liaison.
We had fun.
Yes, we did, we had some great meetings.
It's always a pleasure seeing you. My name is Brenda Troxell and my address is 594 Vicksburg Court in LaGrange, Ohio, and my question is, with the coming of the Republican National Convention in 2016, are there any strategies that Lorraine County is working on to bring in some of those dollars that are hopefully going to seep into our, our county?
Well, I know Tony Gallo is, you know, starting that discussion and as I, I think I told one of the newspapers that as a reporter, I had a chance to cover a couple of conventions and, you know, you don't always necessarily get your, your hotel in the downtown area just, you know, a short distance from the center, so a lot of those hotels, especially when you're talking about, as Tony pointed out at the luncheon, 16,000 members of the media will be at that convention. We all know how big Gund Arena is and everything else, so, so a lot of individuals are going to have to stay a significant number of miles away. I think we're fortunate in being a bordering county. You know, if you leave our county line and go to downtown Cleveland, I think it's about 18 to 20 miles, so there's opportunities there. You know, he mentioned an interesting concept of using the Jet Express and, you know, bringing the Jet Express, have people come out here and, you know, take a tour that way, but I'd like to think there are going to be opportunities for people staying possibly, you know, in our hotels, to get them into our restaurants and, you know, we have a lakefront to take advantage of as well, too. So it'll be certainly a project that will be worked on, I'm sure, collectively with the communities as well and, and as I said, we need to reach out to those communities that have been in the outer ring or inner ring, maybe, of conventions in the past and find out some of the things that maybe they did to try to attract people, so certainly there's an opportunity there.
There's already been a meeting with the Chamber, Team Lorraine County. We sent somebody from Community Development, the college, to look at opportunities there and of course, visit Lorraine County, the Visitors Bureau, because this is really a tourism-type piece, you know, rather than business development, and I think those folks that we help fund and the partners are absolutely on top of this right now. The, you know, to put some kind of package together, but I like what Commissioner said, very seldom they leave the downtown area and go too far. They may house out here, we have a few hotels that are close enough by, but they're probably going to do most of their spending downtown, but remember, we're part of the region, so that helps us. A lot of our folks, 50% of our people leave this county every day to work and they work in jobs that are supported by all that activity downtown.
Well, to tie in your regional perspective, we already had Muznawak is actually part of the main team on moving people around and how we're actually going to stage that, so, and it's an organization of five continued, five counties, four of them contiguous to Cuyahoga, of course, so I think there's going to be a lot of benefit, at least in and out. I don't know what the economic impact overall will be, but I think we'll see some and always based on weather and what all the other organizations do. You only fit so many people in downtown Cleveland, let's be honest, so you're going to spread out to some degree. And again, with our Visitors Bureau tied into it, the Chamber of Commerce, Team Lorraine County, we have a lot of amenities in Lorraine County. I think it'll be attractive to a lot of people.
Very good, well, thank you. Have you ever been downtown when there, a basketball game is going on, trying to get around? I just can't imagine what it's going to be like down there.
A few years back, I went to the last, the last game of the Cleveland Indians season and did that and then went over to the Q, it was a zoo.
Yeah.
Two games in one day, it was a zoo.
Right.
The busiest times actually after the conventions because then individuals want to get something to eat, get a couple of drinks and...
Anyone else? Okay, come on up.
Frank, you started a wave.
Just needed somebody to break the ice, that's all.
Hi. Dylan Cook, 38, 32, North Hogan Drive, Lorraine, Ohio. My question is, we talked this morning about the lakefront development that you guys had planned on doing. Just curious, you know, what the plan entails, you know, what, what are we working on and then also if we're planning on doing any partnerships with local counties that are surrounding along the lake?
Well, what we want to look at is, there's probably only, I believe, eight counties that actually have shoreline, so we're fortunate enough to have an opportunity here to begin with. What it would entail is, is bringing together the lakefront communities, but also, you know, neighboring communities of the lakefront communities. We would probably bring in the tourism folks as well, too, but we want to work closely with, you know, in our case, Congresswoman Marcy Capter, she oversees the, basically the shoreline communities throughout our county in Washington. It's our understanding that there are federal dollars that are available for, for planning grants, so the first step is to take a look at what we're currently, what's currently available and how we can maximize that and then other opportunities that exist. But let me stress, it has nothing to do with taking anyone's home from the lakefront, it has nothing to do with putting big industry on the lakefront. It's more driven along the line of retail, restaurants, tourism, recreational activities. So it, it would be a unique partnership, but it'd just be an opportunity for us to at least put together a game plan and then, once we have a game plan in place, we can talk to potential developers and see what their level of interest may be. I think we often hear some of the lakefront mayors comment that they have businesses coming to them, say, "Be ideal if we could just do a lakefront restaurant somewhere." You know, I mean, we're blessed with Jackalope, but there aren't many other places beyond that that you can actually go to for a lakefront experience.
Rose Cafe, Metro Parks Rose Cafe.
Metro Parks Rose Cafe, absolutely, right.
So bringing things that will attract people to the area and then...
Yeah, that's, you know, if they come to the area, then hopefully, they, you know, taken a Crusher's Ball Game and they shop at our stores and eat at our restaurants.
Thank you.
We do have a representative from Marcy Capter's office here, Mr. Turner, did you have anything or did you, are you just observing? Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Thank you, not a problem at all. We've had a couple of conversations with Commissioner Lundey and we look forward to having more. He's right, we're going to start looking into where we can fit into helping redevelop our lakefront. The Congresswoman has a number of initiatives to revitalize and help redevelop some of our communities we represent, so we just look forward to continue the conversation.
Thanks for being here. Anybody else? Yeah, we can't stop them, no. Just kidding.
My name is Shelley Freidenstein and I actually live in Huron County. I'm at 6007 Section 9 Road in Huron County, but I was a born and raised Oberlinian for a long time and have lived most of my life in Lorraine County and I keep coming back here. But I have two questions or ones more so statement, just from an awareness standpoint. I'm the HR Director for a privately owned business here in Lorraine County and we continue to see more and more issue with being able to employ people who, who are able to pass drug screens. And so the drug problem in Lorraine County and surrounding counties and throughout Ohio, I realize Huron County is no different, is of concern to me and trying to do what we can, and I know there are a lot of task forces out there to support that, but whatever you can do to continue to support that effort would certainly be helpful because it's becoming more and more difficult to employ people in a safe environment. And so that would be the first statement. My actual question is, I also am a 4H leader here in Lorraine County and as you know, that was a big subject last year for you all, but my concern is that I see more and more youth on the streets and not doing anything constructive and I'm concerned that we be able to put our efforts towards programs that will get the youth involved in creative and constructive activities that are good for them and that grow their abilities and challenge their minds, especially as they become the next generation. So my question is, what are you doing as Commissioners and what can the county do to sort of drive that process?
Drive the 4H, I mean, I...
Not just 4H.
Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Big Brothers, Boys and Girls Clubs. You know, are there additional efforts going on that we may not be aware of?
Can I answer some of that?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim, workforce and the youth services.
Actually, as displeased as I think a lot of us are with, with the Governor's budget, there was one thing that intrigued me and they want to make the Summer Work Experience Youth Work Program permanent. We have been operating under funds that become available, so we're not really sure each year whether we're going to have a summer employment program. It's been a wild success. It actually started, you know, with, a few years ago, when we had some dollars through the Obama Administration and then it went through the Job and Family Services funding and so forth. So that program's really great, it gives them a work experience, it's not just giving them money. We put them with employers that help mentor and we do soft skill development with them and rather than just trying to give them someplace to play or, or not be on the streets, we try to give them a work experience in conjunction with training. So that program is underway. Hopefully, that'll, that'll survive the budget battles that are going to happen down in Columbus because we can see that, we can measure the success of that program every because we, we can see that, we can measure the success of that program every year. And we also, through We Are Youth Dollars, have funded various programs in the Boys and Girls Club and, and other agencies that directly provide mentoring services to at-risk youth. The real shortfall comes in is if you're not qualified as at-risk or we are eligible, there's, there's not a lot of dollars right now being applied to those programs. And of course, people think that all the problems are in Lorraine and Alleea and I'm sad to tell you that, you know, the biggest problem with drugs and, and youth issues right now are happening in our more premier communities. They're just more well-disguised and masked a little better, so services need to be stepped up in those areas. But I know that the social service agencies are having a considerable amount of discussions on that to bring programming into the communities to assist with those problems. But it all goes back to what Commissioner Lundey said, we need the state to return more dollars to us so that we can do more in this community. Taxpayers have shown a reluctance to give us additional support, i.e. revenue, so we need the state to step to the, to the table and assist with that, because there's been reductions in mental health, there's been reductions in drug and alcohol funds, there's been reductions across the board to all agencies, including children's services, although I think I saw an increase in the governor's budget to children's services. There was some initiative to fund some additional dollars into children's services. So, you know, those are the things that are going on right now and there's more that needs to happen. So write a letter to the governor's office, write a letter to your state rep and...
Matt's former colleagues.
Matt's former colleagues, I'm sure he knows their address and everything about them, because we need that assistance unless, unless the community itself steps to the table with additional funding resources.
As far as the drug issue that you brought up, I, I sit on a couple of different boards and sit some task force also, but the last Community Corrections Board meeting I attended, the director of the Addus Board, which is Alcohol and Drug Board, said the heroin epidemic is not even going to peak until 2017, so we haven't even seen the worst of it yet. We all need to do what we can to try to eliminate this whole problem. It's, it's bigger than us and it's going to take a lot of people to conquer this, it's...
As you pointed out, it is sad, a lot of employers say, "We have the jobs, we just can't fill them" because people not passing drug tests and it's, it's interesting. I was at dinner last week and I wasn't deliberately listening to anybody's conversation at another table, but, you know, here was two individuals, you know, they were very well dressed and everything and the gentleman said to the lady, "I really like this job, but I got to pass a drug test and, you know, I don't think I'm going to be able to pass it." And I thought that was kind of, kind of interesting, but that's occurring a lot in the community. We used to hear that a lot, I think it was Alleea Foundry, when I worked for the city of Alleea, would say, "We've got, you know, good-paying jobs, good benefits, but we can't get people to pass drug tests."
Thank you.
And I don't want to sound like a broken record, I'm from the prosecutor's office and we almost always have a sheriff's deputy here, but there's somebody from the sheriff's...
We have one in our class.
Oh, okay. They, they can certainly tell you about the situation, but, and, you know, we sound like a broken record, but, you know, back in 2000, 2000, 2007, 2008, when the economy went south, understandably, people could not afford to pay taxes and things to support law enforcement. The drug dealers became aware of that and, you know, the, the less we have in, in law enforcement, the more they're going to come here. And as Lori says, the heroin situation has become problematical. And, you know, I go around and I hear people say, "Government should run like the private sector." Well, in the private sector, you get what you pay for and if nobody wants to fund law enforcement, you're going to get what you pay for. So again, it sounds like a broken record, but people have to understand, you don't get something for nothing. And if we want to address the drug problem, either the state getting us more money or the local citizens funding it is the only answer.
We had the crime lab on the ballot last time and it was going to be $4 a year, or $3, $3 to $4 a year if you had a $100,000 house and it was rejected. So, I mean, we, we need those types of things to help us with this, with this epidemic.
And I think your question was about what we're doing with the youth, right? It started and then we kind of diverged over into the drug issue. And we'll tell you that, nothing does better than providing opportunity for people to take themselves out of poverty. Government doesn't take people out of poverty, people take people out of poverty and the first thing they need is a job or an opportunity for a job. Now, I know there's, there's a lot of issues with, with not being able to keep people because of drug testing, but there's many people out there that still want that job. We have to be able to get them to the job. I can tell you right now that you cannot afford car, car insurance, rent, electric bills, et cetera, et cetera, on $7.75 or $8 an hour. So they need assistance and that assistance comes in the form of services through Job and Family Services, a helping hand, not a handout, and maybe a ride to work and some, some of those, some of those things that'll help them along the continuum to be self-sustaining. You know, we don't need a poverty society, we need a society that helps each other move along that continuum's success so that we can support ourselves. When people don't have those things, they tend to dwell in other areas. They tend to be involved in, in, in less desirable conduct. So, you know, we're working on that, but, but we need much more resources than we have.
Thanks for your question.
Thank you.
Time to go?
Yeah, we're on a tight schedule.
Okay. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Your questions and your patience. I'll make a motion to go into executive session as outlined by both the administrator and the Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alleea. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.